Please welcome our Mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer and I would like to welcome you to the November 2011 City Council Meeting of the City of Orlando. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered today by Dr. Rollis A. Fraser Jr. of St. John's Missionary Baptist Church located on the former pastor's named street Fred L. Maxwell Boulevard in District 5. Church has existed for eighty-seven years in the Orlando area and is making a tremendous impact in the lives of the people in our community. Pastor Fraser has been serving as the Senior Pastor at St. John's since 2002 and the church has thrived under his leadership. Pastor Fraser's invocation will be followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Ings today. Will everybody please join me in standing?
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for this time and privilege together. We thank you for what our eyes are going to see, our ears are going to hear. We ask now, God, that you will bless our mayor, bless all the city council. Ask God that she continue to put their minds, their hearts together. They will make decisions that will be betterment for this city. And God, we just thank you for life today, health and strength. For we realize, God, you didn't have to do it, but you did anyway. So we're grateful, we love you, we praise you, we honor you. And we ask that you will bless this session. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's officially called a meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make the termination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Dyer.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's take up for consideration the minutes of the October 34, 2011 workshop agenda review and city council meetings.
Second.
Motion by, was that Commissioner Lineham?
Ings.
Commissioner Lineham? Ings. Commissioner Ings, seconded by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Right into awards and presentations and I'm going to call on Richard Forbes to recognize the individuals who were selected as winners of the Historic Preservation Board Calendar, 2012 Calendar Photographic Image Contest. Richard?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Commissioners. I'm Richard Forbes, Historic Preservation Officer. The Historic Preservation Board's 2012 Calendar Photo Contest was a great success and we're here today to thank all those that submitted photos and to showcase the winners of the competition. The Historic Preservation Board has produced a calendar as an educational tool since 1989. And today, the 2012 Historic Preservation Board Calendar celebrates the Lake Ivanhoe National Register of Historic Places District. This community's rich history is something that all of us here in Orlando and Central Florida have treasured for years and now the value of this neighborhood has been recognized at the national level as well. The district was placed on the National Register of Historic Places by the United States Department of the Interior on December 20th, 2010. Now, the National Register of Historic Places is the official list of the nation's historic places worthy of preservation. Authorized by the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966, the Park Service's National Register of Historic Places is part of a national program to coordinate and support public and private efforts to identify, evaluate, and protect America's historic resources. The Lake Ivanhoe Historic Residential District is part of the much larger College Park neighborhood. The first subdivision to bear the name College Park was filed in 1925. The subdivision stretched from Dartmouth on the south to Princeton on the north and from Edgewater on the west to University on the east. This is the area that is now the heart of the Lake Ivanhoe National Register District. The 262-acre district contains 1,016 buildings and eighty-one percent of those buildings contribute to the historic character of the neighborhood. Now, as always, for the photo competition, the contestants were given the boundaries of the district and simply instructed to go out and get the best image they could. The Historic Preservation Board Publications Committee was then charged with a very difficult task, this year especially, of blind judging the many wonderful images that were submitted. We actually had the most images submitted for this year's calendar that we've had in the eighteen years that we've been having a competition. Many thanks, of course, to McCoy Federal Credit Union for their very, very generous sponsorship for both the printing and photo competition for the 2012 calendar. And also thank you to the Historic Preservation Board members and members of the Publications Committee. And now, the thirteen winning photos for the 2012 Historic Preservation Board Calendar. The cover photo was taken by Alex Lindhoff and shows the Princeton Elementary School. The architect for the Mediterranean Revival Style School was Howard Reynolds and the main building was constructed in 1926. Reynolds also designed a number of other schools in Orlando, many of them still being used as schools, including the Grand Avenue School, which was the sister school to Princeton. It was a nearly identical copy. The photo for January was taken by Janann Wolfert and features 1905 Elizabeth Avenue. The charming home is French eclectic in style and features wood shingling, a hip roof, brick chimneys, shutters, and a conical tower with an arched entrance. Constructed in 1936, this fine example is the only French eclectic building in the district. The image for February was captured by Harriet Duncan and shows the Art Modern House at 35 North Ivanhoe Boulevard, which was built in 1948. The cantilevered overhang, flamingo grill, and massing are all elements of the Art Modern style. The March photo was taken by Samantha Thurston and shows the Mediterranean Revival Style House at 107 East Vanderbilt, which was built in 1928 and is one of twenty-nine homes built in this style within the district. The Mediterranean Revival Style is characterized by the clay tile parapet, caps, arches, and distinctive triple round tile vents that are above the windows. The April photo was taken by Tom Driscoll and features the Tudor Revival Style Residence at 1916 Gerda Terrace. The house features elements common to this style, including the half timbering, steep roofs, arched entranceway, and casement windows. This house was built in 1930 and is one of nine homes designed in this style in the district. The May photo is by Brenda Cohen and shows the Poinsett Avenue Bridge. Along with the Ivanhoe Park Beautification Program, the city approved the construction of this bridge across the west end of Lake Ivanhoe in 1938. The bridge was constructed by the WPA in conjunction with the Ivanhoe Park Beautification The June photo was taken by Mark Engler and shows the house at 305 Northwest Ivanhoe Boulevard. It's an excellent example of the Mediterranean Revival Style. Constructed in 1938, the masonry building has a gable roof clad with barrel tile. Character-defining features include a suspended wood balcony, supported by large wood brackets, wrought iron grills, and rustic shutters. The July photo is taken by Mario Corazon and features the Pioneer John Erickson House. This house is at 19 West Princeton Street and it was constructed in 1882. It is the only surviving building erected before the development of College Park. The house originally was surrounded with eighty acres of citrus trees. The photo selected for the month of August was taken by Jenny Wheelock and shows the Craftsman Style House at 600 West Dartmouth Street, which was built in 1926. And there are twenty-seven homes designed in this style within the district. The exposed rafter ends, louvered vents in the gable ends, knee brace brackets, pane windows, and those sturdy wood porch supports are all elements found on Craftsman Style homes. The September photo was taken by Cynthia Slaughter and showcases the interesting textures found on the house located at 15 North Ivanhoe Boulevard. This mid-century modern style ranch house was constructed in 1962. The building has a sweeping shallow front gable roof that shelters and an integrated porch. The porch features straight concrete columns united with a decorative aluminum screen. The October photo was taken by Paul Hennessy and shows the Mediterranean Revival Style House at 17 West Ivanhoe Boulevard. This house was designed by architect Richard Boone Rogers and was built by the Paul Smith Construction Company for Robert Coffey in 1937. Some of the Mediterranean features on this house include the entrance tower with a twenty-panel carved door inset and a scalloped stepped arch, terracotta roof tiles, wrought iron grill work, scrolled medillions under the second-story balcony, and the decorative tile cap chimney. The photo for November was taken by Deanne Carr of the bungalow at 205 West Princeton Street. The house was built in 28 and has elements typical of the style such as exposed rafter ends, wood siding, and double-hung paired windows. There are sixty contributing bungalows in the district, as bungalows were a very popular home style in Orlando from the 1920s through to the early 40s. The December photo was captured inside 610 Greeley Street by Nancy Jo Brown. The artist and builder was Sam Stoltz and he designed the house for himself and his wife in 1928. Stoltz was the designer for a number of homes in College Park and this house is designed in the Mediterranean Revival Style, which Stoltz called "Spanish Orlando." It includes many touches that the artist was famous for, including tile work, plaster relief of birds and fish, and pecky cypress mantel doors and ceilings. The 2012 Historic Preservation Board Calendar shows the rich history of College Park and a reminders of the important role this area has played in Orlando's past and will continue to play in the future. I want to thank all the photographers who submitted their work. There are boards showing all the contestant photographs outside the entrance to council chambers. The calendars will be available in the rotunda of City Hall, the Orange County History Center in Lew Gardens, and there are also calendars available right now out in front. So Mayor Dyer, if you would come down, please, and help me hand out these certificates of appreciation and would all the contestant winners please come down as well, including Wayne Schnekke of McCoy Federal.
Okay, Lori Botts has the next presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, Commissioners. It is my pleasure to introduce today the members of CREW Orlando and the CREW Careers Committee. CREW stands for Commercial Real Estate Women and it's an organization I've been involved with for many years. Next Saturday, November 19th, CREW Orlando will welcome high school students in grades ten through twelve from across Central Florida for the Sixth Annual CREW Careers Program and it's going to be held this year at City Hall. Each of you have a bag on your desk and a flyer inside in the event you know any girls who would like to be involved in this program. This year, we have students coming from Edgewater, Boone, Evans, Jones, Bishop Moore, Trinity Prep, Elevate Orlando, the Beta Center, and the Pace School, along with Girl Scouts from the Central Florida Council. They will all spend the day here in a day-long program exploring career options along with a tour of our LEED-certified fire station number one. May Ann Downs, our city attorney and immediate past president of the Florida Bar, will serve as the keynote speaker for the event. CREW Careers is a nationwide event designed to mentor young women and help them explore the varied and diverse career options for women in commercial real estate. Mayor, would you please read and present the proclamation?
Thank you, Lori. Proclamation, City of Orlando. Whereas Commercial Real Estate Women Orlando, CREW Orlando recognizes Central Florida as a vibrant landscape for the commercial real estate industry and in 2012 will celebrate twenty-five years of success in our community. And whereas the mission of CREW is to advance the success of women in commercial real estate by looking outward to bring more women into the industry. And whereas CREW Orlando is hosting its sixth annual CREW Careers Building Opportunities Event on Saturday, November 19th. And whereas since its inception, CREW Orlando has helped hundreds of local high school girls connect with leading businesswomen to gain an understanding of how to take the first steps towards a successful career in commercial real estate. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando hereby do proclaim Saturday, Commissioner Ings, I'm going to turn this one over to you. Did you know that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and City Council, I would like to introduce Dr. Kevin Sharon. Dr. Sharon is the Director of Public Health for the Orange County Health Department, which serves 1.33 million people and fifty million annual tourists in Orlando. Heading up the local health department since 2004, Dr. Sharon has led efforts to improve HIV and infectious disease prevention and eliminate birth outcome disparities. Dr. Kevin Sharon is also President of the American Association of Public Health Physicians and President of the Florida Association of County Health Officers. Dr. Sharon has teaching appointments as a clinical professor at Florida State University's College of Medicine and the University of Central Florida's College of Medicine and College of Health and Public Affairs. Dr. Sharon will give a brief synopsis on the All In Project and the Secondhand Smoking Resolution that was signed on September 12th, 2011 by Orlando Mayor Buddy Dyer.
Well, I want to honor you, Members of the City Council, and especially Commissioner Samuel B. Ings of District 6 and the Honorable Mayor Buddy Dyer, because it's your leadership that's helped to propel a momentum in our community. A number of other cities have joined you in this resolution and there will be another one tomorrow, I believe, from the City of Apopka as well. But I'd like to tell you a short story, if I might, about All In and how it ties into the very beginnings of public health in our country. We had the historical overview of the calendar and the historic buildings in College Park. And at the beginning of our country in 1799, the first board of health came into being in this town of Boston, I don't even believe it was a city yet. And Paul Revere was asked to chair the Local Board of Health and the issue was the city park. The city park was full of the animals' waste and it was a public health nuisance of the time. Well, in a modern way, you all have addressed a public health nuisance in our time and that is not only the secondhand smoke, Commissioner, that you alluded to, because that has harmful health effects on children, I believe that sincerely, but also the little cigarette butts that are all over those children's play areas, okay? What if the little child picks it up and eats it? That's something we never even thought about. But your resolution has gone on to be multiplied time and again already in the county and it continues to go forward with more municipalities and counties. So we from the All In Group would like to recognize you, the City of Orlando, in particular, Mayor Buddy Dyer and Commissioner Samuel B. Ings. So I'd like the staff to come up and present you with a couple of plaques. This is the highest award the Health Department can give you as the City of Orlando and the two representatives who helped to make this possible.
Dr. Sharon, would you read the plaque, please?
Yes. "The certificate is awarded to the City of Orlando in recognition of your significant contributions toward creating a healthier community. It is through your leadership and commitment that you are making a difference in improving the lives for the residents and the City of Orlando." And then it also says a quote below that, "The most difficult tasks are consummated not by a single explosive burst of energy or effort, but by the constant daily application of the best you have within you." That was an unknown quotation, but it's very appropriate for the occasion. And so your persistent efforts have paid off well and our momentum in our community to having smoke-free spaces, public spaces, smoke-free bars, smoke-free initiatives in other municipalities is coming along rather well. In fact, not only do we have the municipalities and counties, we also have now two very large schools. We have the Orange County Public Schools and our Valencia College, as well as the University of Central Florida, which is now the second-largest university in the United States. So all of these policies have come about from the momentum that you all have helped to create.
We'll move right into Mayor's Update and some of you may have seen a story in the news this week or received an email about a local woman, Karen Peterson, who was set on fire and killed by a friend during the early hours of the morning last week. And as most of you know, Karen was a beloved member of our city staff. She began working with Family Parks and Recreation as a seasonal staff member about eleven years ago, ultimately becoming a full-time employee in 2007. She worked as a gate attendant at Bill Frederick Park at Turkey Lake and sadly she left behind a teenage daughter. She was a very special member of the city family and will be sorely missed. The impact on this community has been obvious with so many calls coming into Bill Frederick Park all day, the day it occurred or after it occurred, from friends and campers and city staff and others who knew and loved Karen. In addition, it pains me to inform you that one of our employees, OPD Officer Rick Rushing, lost his son, Private First Class Theodore Teddy B. Rushing, who served with the US Army in Afghanistan. Teddy was twenty-five and was killed last Friday in combat while on his tour of duty in Afghanistan. Our deepest sympathy is with the Rushing family and their friends as they mourn the loss of their son Teddy. So let's honor both Teddy and Karen with a moment of silence, please. Thank you and let's keep both the Rushing and Peterson family and friends in your thoughts and prayers. Today, we have members of the University of Central Florida Student Government Association with us. They have been touring City Hall all day. I had a chance to meet with them between the workshop and the city council meeting and they had very intriguing questions, a great, smart group of students that are the best we have to offer in our community. Would you guys please stand up so that we can recognize you, see who you are? I hope you've learned a little bit about local government today. I know you also had a presentation on state government and we wish you all the best in your studies and your future careers. Thank you for being here. Go Knights!
All right.
This past weekend, we had a number of events in downtown Orlando on Sunday. I participated with Commissioner Sheehan in the Pride Parade. We had Orlando Calling, a major musical festival, on both Saturday and Sunday. And on Saturday, we had our city's 12th Annual Veterans Day Parade that was put on by the Mayor's Veterans Advisory Council. We had more than 150 organizations participate in the parade and I want to thank all of the volunteers and city staff that made that wonderful event possible. Thanksgiving is right around the corner, so it's time to gather family and friends and give thanks for all the blessings and freedoms that we enjoy, number of which or most of which were provided due to the courage and dedication of our military veterans. And after Thanksgiving, I know many of you are thinking about Black Friday, which is a day that is celebrated almost as much as Thanksgiving, unfortunately, but I also want to remind you about the Second Annual Small Business Saturday on the 26th. It's a day to support local businesses that create jobs and boost our economy. You can find out more about it at cityoforlando.net. We had the Wawa Groundbreaking last Wednesday, which is the first Wawa store in Central Florida with hundreds to come beyond that. What's significant about Wawa coming, in addition to being a good hundred-year-old family business that's good to employees and customers, is to being a good 100-year-old family business that's good to employees and customers, is they serve a five-state region in the mid-Atlantic and wanted to expand, and they looked all around the country at where they thought their best opportunity, economic opportunity, would be, and the good news is they chose central Florida. So welcome, Wawa. Very happy to share with you that as of October the 28th, the two gas stations over on 436 that we have been grappling with for about four years are in compliance with the city's gasoline station sign requirements ordinance.
That's great.
A lot of us didn't know if this day would ever get here, but they are now displaying the price of their gas so that when people pull into their station, they will know that they just what they are going to pay. We never wanted to regulate how much they could charge, but we did want their customers to know how much they were going to be charged when they started pumping. A few weeks ago, we entered into a rental agreement for a possible new ECHL hockey franchise, and I am pleased to report back that the ECHL, a premier double-A development hockey league, has approved the new franchise, and we will have an announcement on Wednesday at 1:30 at the Amway Center of the new team and announce the official name, and it's going to be exciting. Couple of things on the agenda. In 2009, as part of our Strengthen Orlando Initiative, we secured almost $7 million to implement a neighborhood stabilization program. We were so successful with that program that when they reallocated money from other cities' programs that had not fared as well, we got another $3 million to purchase foreclosed properties and rehab them largely in District Two, and we're now targeting another phase of the stabilization program in an area in east of Orlando. So far, we have purchased 46 properties, resold or rented 26, and have another 15 that are being rehabilitated. Over the last three years, chief will tell you, incidents of domestic abuse, even leading to domestic homicides, have increased in the city of Orlando. I joined with Chief Rooney and Harbor House to launch a campaign called "It Takes Courage," aimed at curbing that violence. We continue to partner with Harbor House, and there's some additional funding on the agenda for them. There are several other housing items that outline how the city will be allocating about $4 million that we received from HUD. We'll be dispersing it to a number of not-for-profits, and I believe some of them that are here, if you would stand, Miracle of Love, Beta House, Village of Orlando, Tree of Life, Extending Hands, Jewish Family Services, and Coalition for the Homeless. And if I missed anybody else, would you please stand and be recognized And then lastly, on the good economic front news, the city recently applied for and was awarded a transportation fund grant through the state of Florida to assist Amcor Rigid Plastics with a transportation turn lane and cutout that were on Tradeport, and this type of grant allows cities to apply for funds to eliminate transportation obstacles to businesses that wish to relocate or expand in the state of Florida. Amcor is a global leader in packaging products, and you'll recall that we approved a QTI for them earlier this year, and Amcor's decision to stay in Orlando results in the creation of 29 new jobs and the retention of 97 jobs and a capital investment of $20 million. So good news for the city and on the job front. With that, we will move to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each member of council an opportunity to comment on items, as I did, and also update you on things going on in their district. We rotate who gets to go first in the order, and today is District Six Commissioner Samuel B. Enges.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. And Mayor, I want to thank you for reminding me of Karen Peterson's family and also informing me of Officer Rick Rushing's family, and so my condolences go out to both families, and also my condolences go out to the city of Orlando Family Parks and Recreation family, too, because we know Karen meant so much to you, Lisa, and to the Turkey Lake Park venue there, and a great individual that had a great impact on the city as well as visitors coming into Turkey Lake Park. This past Monday, I met with Charissa Hurdle, who is the juvenile probation officer for the state of Florida, and we're going to be planning together. I will be supporting them. The Florida Juvenile Probation Office is going to be scheduling a Orlando Youth Summit, and it will be held at the Dr. James R. Smith Center, and it's in January. And the reason I'm announcing it so early is because we really do want our youth to be involved in this particular program, because this is something that's going to benefit you, and specifically for those kids that work within our police department. And Officer Tia, you've got the Youth Teen Academy. It would be great for those individuals to also participate in this particular program. So the Florida Juvenile Probation Office will be supporting and having an Orlando Youth Summit on January 7th, 2012, at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. And this past November 9th, I wasn't here, but we did have the Prodigy Showcase that was held here at Orlando City Hall. This is an annual event that we do in support of our kids, specifically our underserved kids and underprivileged kids. The Orlando Neighborhood Improvement Corporation is the sponsor behind this. Alexis Collins and April Jennings, thank you so very much for bringing the youth out, and the youth art was displayed in the rotunda, and so many different activities happened here at City Hall. And then on November the 16th, I will be having and hosting my seniors' Thanksgiving luncheon for District Six, and we'll be honoring our seniors who have contributed a lifetime of love and care to their families and also our community. And also Mayor Buddy Dyer will be joining me at that event along with the staff of the L. Claudia Allen Center, and we're inviting all the seniors to come out and partake in this luncheon. It will be served from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and it's going to be held at 1840 Mabel Butler Avenue here in the city of Orlando. And thank you, Universal Studios of Orlando, SeaWorld, Parks and Entertainment, and the Han Foundation for your corporate support of this event. And then on Friday, November 25th, the day after Thanksgiving, I will be hosting a District Six Thanksgiving concert for the seniors, and this is our second annual event. It will be held at El Baffo, Temple of Orlando, 3000 Bruton Boulevard, and we're going to have the Stella Award winners, Luther Barnes and the Sunset Jubileers, Helen Miller, Walicia Creighton, and the Turner Brothers. And this is a free concert for our seniors and our families, and we will also be giving out community awards for those seniors that have really assisted us in helping to have a strong and vibrant District Six. Some of our sponsors include Universal Orlando Resort, SeaWorld, Bright House Networks, WellCare, Physicians Associates, and we're asking all to come out and enjoy this particular event. This would be a great event that we always want to do for our seniors, because they do give so much for our community, and thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District One, Commissioner Diamond.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would also like to express my condolences to the Peterson family and the Rushing family, and we'll be keeping them in our thoughts and prayers, and I would encourage everybody else to as well. That's just terrible news about both of them, and our thoughts go out to both of the families. Thanksgiving is coming up, and I want to be the first to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I'd also like to thank everybody that participated in the city food drive by donating food and either dropping it off here at City Hall or at the city's fire stations, and I'd really encourage everybody to do that, not just that particular drive, but I know a number of offices and neighborhood associations, churches, synagogues, mosques, a whole slew of organizations are doing that this time of year, and it's important because as we enjoy the holidays, I think we really need to keep in mind the teachings as far as helping others who may also need help in enjoying the holidays. So I would encourage everybody to keep on doing that and thank those that have done that, and ask people to keep on reaching out to good organizations and helping out people that need help. I would also like to mention a very informative workshop we had this morning, which should be on the city's internet site, about the city's Prescription Drug Abuse Task Force. That task force, as well as a task force from Orange County, have been working on ways to help deal with the prescription drug issues, prescription drug abuse issues that we've had in the community. I want to thank them for their work and look forward to seeing their final recommendations and proposed ordinances in the not-too-distant future so that we can do more to deal with this issue. I'd also like to congratulate all the winners from the historical calendars that were here today, and thank them for participating, and also encourage everybody else to take a look at the calendars and see some nice pictures of a very nice neighborhood and some of the nice things that Orlando has to offer. On the agenda, a couple of items I want to mention. Item A3, which is for AmeriCorps, bringing volunteers to Orlando to help out the city. I think that's a good thing. I'm glad to see that. Item B11, the purchase of three electric cars. I'm glad to see that as well. We bought our first hybrid in 2004 and have been very happy with it, and we're an all-hybrid family now, and I really am glad to see that. Item C8, which is the grant from the state of Florida that the mayor mentioned. It's good to see that. That will be over in the Tradeport Drive area as far as helping to create jobs and keep jobs. I think that's something that we truly need right now, and it's also good to see transportation improvements happen at the same time, so I'm very glad to see that. And then last, a little bit later on in the agenda, we'll be hearing about the South Orange Avenue Neighborhood Improvement District, hear about some of their progress, and it's good to see them continuing to work on ways to make the South Orange Avenue even better. So I'm glad to see that coming up a little bit later as well. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to District Two, Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to also express my condolences to the Rushing and the Peterson family. Rick Rushing, we happened to work, when I first came to OPD, he was one of the ones who sort of kind of trained me under ways about the police department, and he's a good friend, so our prayers are with you and your family. Ed, if you can start that video. "I was invited to the Dominican Republic by Senator Sonia Mateo Espinoza from the province of De Javon from November 2nd to the 6th, and we established a dialogue to explore the possibilities of collaborating between the province of De Javon and our city, since we have a big population from Dominican Republic. While there, I also met the ambassador and consul general of Haiti in Atlanta, Honorable Gandhi Thomas. I had the opportunity to visit Haiti also. It was a great, humbling experience. We're looking also for a dialogue to establish some lines of collaboration, since we also have a great population of people from Haiti here. So overall, it was a great trip. People over there are very humble, very hospitable, and I can say enough about the way they treated me while there, so if they're watching on TV or whatnot, thank you. Thank you so much for your hospitality and for the opportunity to visit those great countries. The Harry P. Lou Gardens 50th anniversary celebration was a very special one, and I had the opportunity to go over there and spend some time learning more about the doings, what's going on over there. Robert Bowen Baldwin. Thank you for such a great event, and Commissioner Stewart, I want to congratulate you for having this great place in your district. You're lucky. You're lucky to have it. It is a great venue for all of us. So on November 7th, we had our annual Kids' Day Out Against Crime event at the Bellagio Apartments. I want to thank our liaison officer, Eddie Rosado, and Kia Council for planning this event. It was a great event. We had a lot of fun with those kids, curious kids. You can only imagine the kind of questions they come up with, but it was fun. Last Thursday, I attended two great events. I presented a proclamation on behalf of Mayor Dyer at the third Men Go Red for Women event in my district at the Executive Airport. I want to thank Mr. Caesar Calvet and Mr. Todd Anderson for their hospitality. It was a great event, very classy. They have some airplanes and some nice cars on display over there, pretty neat stuff, and he was a great fundraiser for this great cause. I also attended the Jackson Middle School Veterans Day Celebration. I'm thanking Ms. Barbara Lopez for inviting me. Great event also. Once again, this past Saturday, I participated at the city's Veterans Parade. It was quite a hike. I kept falling behind and trying to catch up, and of course, Commissioner Stewart kept making fun of me, so I want to congratulate all the city staff for putting up such a great event, and it was a great job. I really enjoyed it, and I know a lot of people from my district that attended. They really enjoyed it, too, so thank you, guys. Last Saturday, I also attended the WE, the Hispanic Women Chamber of Commerce of Florida Annual Gala. And when I say WE, I mean them, not me. So I had to leave early due to personal reasons, but I really enjoyed the time I spent with them. Congratulations. I want to echo Commissioner Diamond's words, and I want to wish the whole city a happy Thanksgiving, and please keep our soldiers, those who are serving overseas, on your prayers, because those guys are doing a tremendous job, and sometimes they don't get praised enough. And I was there back in 1991, and life is not easy at all over there under those conditions. So please keep on your prayers, and if you have a chance to write someone or send a care package, do so. They would really appreciate that. On agenda, item B12 and 13, I want to thank Mayor Dyer and fellow commissioners and the staff for the $3 million NSP grant that will be helping tremendously on our efforts for revitalization on our district. That really helps, in addition to what we're doing on the Seminole Boulevard. Our district has come a long way, and now more than ever, with all the homes that we have in our district that have been foreclosed, it would be a tremendous incentive for those who are looking for a house and that don't have quite the income to afford one of these high-priced homes. Also, on item F3, congratulations to the Beta Center on being the recipients of a HOD Emergency Shelter Grant. We all know how well-deserved you guys are. You guys work really hard with our community, so I'm very glad you're the recipients of this grant. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Three, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and I also want to extend my condolences to the Peterson and Rushing family. Had an unfortunate opportunity to announce that to a neighborhood group yesterday to ask for their prayers, and it's just timely to remember that although there are veterans that are serving, there's also veterans that continue to sacrifice, give the ultimate sacrifice. Mayor, thank you for you and your team for the leadership on Lou Gardens, celebrating 50 years. I had a chance to share a little bit out there, and Commissioner Sheen and I are going to have a joint work party for the After School All-Stars. We're really thrilled about doing something out there. It's a community service project so that After School All-Stars and we can celebrate the 50th anniversary of Lou Gardens. I do want to share one thing along your same theme of loving Orlando. Eva Bacon did a quick synopsis of Harry P. Lou's life and concluded unlike any other person she spoke about in the entire history of Orlando, and the conclusion was that Harry P. Lou had a passion for this community. And so I think that is one thing that we celebrate on this dius, as well as many of our own citizens have a passion for our community. Had a great Veterans Day event, the picnic, I'm sorry, the parade. The Boy Scout Troop 200 helped me pass out some candy and some flags. I appreciate that. But also, I want to just make a quick mention of the Grand Marshal, Captain Michael Waldrop. Captain Michael Waldrop is an Afghanistan retired from the Army as a twice winner of the Silver Star, the second-highest award you can win for bravery in the US Army. A wonderful man who started a wonderful new foundation to help returning soldiers from Afghanistan to continue to make the adjustment back to life back in the States. In addition to that, let me share a couple of things going on in the community. The Festival of Trees is in its 25th year at the Orlando Metropolitan of Art. It'll run now through November 20th. Of course, Holiday House is open over at Lou Gardens, and will be open until January 4th. This Friday night, come out and join me at the Ivanhoe Village for their annual Jingle Eve, and they're doing a Holiday Boat Parade, so get a chance to judge the Holiday Boat Parade on Lake Ivanhoe. It's been a great event from 6:00 to 10:00 this Friday evening. And of course, December 1st is College Park's annual holiday on the drive, so get a chance to come out there. They'll be lighting a new, beautiful Christmas tree, and they'll celebrate, help the community. the community as well as be a little fundraiser for the group. Couple of things on the agenda I'd like to share. Uh, I mentioned it earlier in the agenda review meeting, but Infusion T is, uh, will award them a facade grant and, uh, Mayor, I want to thank you for your continued support of the facade grants, uh, for, that help small business and help us keep jobs, uh, in our local community. Uh, thank you to those who worked on the approving the new concrete repair and construction contract that we have. A lot of projects have been held up trying to get that, that completed. Thank you for the work and public works to accomplish that task. And then today, we also will be approving a contract of one point one million dollars from the, the, uh, the FDOT through the feds, uh, for upgrades to the Gaston Edwards Park around Lake Ivanhoe. Uh, this is another opportunity where we leverage, uh, the city to get funding outside of the city to accomplish this task. Uh, thanks Jeff Arms and the work he's done over there. Uh, we're getting one point one million dollar contract to do this. In addition to that, it's also four hundred thousand dollars underneath our budget. So, um, so we did, had a good deal for the government and a good deal for us, uh, and it's going to be a good thing for our citizens. And last but not least, I have a couple of small barrels I'm going to be sharing with, uh, Commissioner Ings and Commissioner Diamond in celebration of Edgewooder's continued dominance over Boone High School this past Friday. So I have a few barrels for you to have. I just want you to know that.
I'm ready.
Twenty-eight, seven. You guys played pretty good.
Well, we were just trying to say welcome to Boone High School.
At least we still have the Gators.
That's right. Thank you, sir.
And on to District Four. Commissioner Sheehan.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to offer my condolences to the Peterson and Rushin families. Very different, um, situations. One, you know, valiantly giving his life for our country and the other, uh, senseless act of domestic violence that is too pervasive in our community unfortunately. Got the opportunity to go to the National League of Cities last week and we got to see some public art programs, solar showcase, farmer's market and light rail transit. So that was kind of neat to see how other cities are doing all those things that we've got coming to our city and are things we already have and how we can improve on them. Over the weekend, we had to come out with pride celebration with fifty thousand people downtown enjoying the fireworks and the, and the fellowship. It was a lot of fun and Mayor Dyer, I'd like to just recognize you for, we're having, gonna, y'all, we're going to be having an upcoming domestic partnership registry coming before you. I know you all have been briefed on this. It's very, very important to the LGBT community for things like funeral arrangements, hospital and jail visitation, educational decisions and medical surrogacy. These are things that, you know, a lot of us take for granted, but those in the gay community are denied. And Mayor Dyer, I just want to commend you for your leadership on this and also thank the staff for their hard work. I know it's going to be coming soon and there's, you know, unfortunately in election years, there's a lot of political posturing and the gay community is very much in favor of moving this forward and having this happen. And Mayor Dyer, we really want to thank you for your leadership on this. On the agenda today, on item A four, the Pill Mill Task Force. Uh, I think it's great that we're moving forward, um, on making sure that we can shut this down through zoning, um, and, you know, this is a huge problem in our community. Item B eight, fountain maintenance. Now that we've got the Lake Eagle Fountain working beautifully and it was just absolutely gorgeous last night, they had a show in addition to the fireworks. The fountain really looked great, but the important thing now is going to make sure that we can maintain it properly and, uh, that's on the agenda today. Item C six, Second Harvest Food Bank. What's really exciting about this is this expansion is going to allow for fresh vegetable refrigeration that will really enable for Second Harvest to expand their healthy initiatives that they're doing and I wholeheartedly support this and really look forward to, to their new facility. And item F six through ten, appreciate the staff's efforts on housing of people with AIDS on all those, um, uh, things that are coming through from HUD funding. And that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And District Five, Commissioner Lineham.
Thank you. And, uh, what I'll do first before I do the NLC report is go through the things in the district. This is the classic week, y'all. So this is one of my busy weeks and, uh, just coming back from Phoenix last night from the National League of Cities, it's going to be a rough week, but it's fun. Uh, we could kick off classic. I've been doing that since ninety-eight with the reception and it was started to help grow the classic. So, uh, want to say thanks to all our sponsors and it was for elected officials, making sure when they come, they will bring their constituents. And that's on Friday night. We're going to have a tennis tournament on Wednesday and Thursday. We know that, uh, there is golf going on during the football season, but there was never any tennis. So if you guys play tennis and want to come out, it's only twenty dollars for singles, I think, I may be doubles and singles and doubles over at our tennis center. It is our center, so please come and join with us. I think the first, um, I think we are opening up about seven. I don't see Rodney, but I think it's about seven thirty or eight o'clock. We're going to have great fun and the, um, um, the winners will be recognized on Thursday and a great little reception. So that's for the Florida Classic. Oh, the game is Saturday. I think it's, what, twelve-thirty or two-thirty? Two-thirty. And that's the favorite time of the year for me. That's the only game I really go to. I don't watch it, but I do go to it. So come on out and let's have fun. On last week before leaving for Phoenix, I did participate in the UNCF five K. I'm willing to walk anywhere, um, and, and a five K is very easy for me. Maybe a marathon, I can't do, but I want to say thanks to the chief. I think he started off, I hit it off the runners. Uh, and I was very, very proud of you and to see Orlando Police Department there making everything smooth. It was so smooth, I just could not believe it. Thank you very much and the department for that service. Then, um, on this Thursday as a part of the classic too, there is a Save the Family organization started by Reverend Holmes out of Tallahassee who was a trustee with M U. And I am going to be honored on Thursday at lunch, uh, Thursday night. I don't really remember, but, um, and it's going to be in Eatonville. The idea was to have, uh, a walk to honor families and those people have been married thirty and fifty years and those kind of things and looking to the family and saving the family. So, um, I want to say a special thanks to Reverend Holmes and our local committee because family is important to us. Everything we do here in the city is about our residents, whether they're constituents or not, and most of our residents come out of families here. So, uh, you're important. I like to focus on jobs and job opportunities, but I can't get you to buy a house if you don't have a job. So, uh, as a long-term social worker, I can leave some of the other things up to other people, but you've got to have a job to have good health coverage and whatnot. So please come out, join us, uh, for this event in Eatonville and the march on Saturday to the, um, to the stadium, not to the stadium, but it will be a recognition of that. I want to say a real special thanks to Alan for Orlando Calling Concert. I think when we started talking about it, I just asked Alan, notify everybody in advance, every household. And, um, everybody was notified. Everybody wasn't happy, but, uh, everybody was notified. But I heard from Kevin last night, uh, giving me a briefing on it, that he thought in his assessment at OPD's, it was one of the best-run concerts we've ever had in terms of logistics, keeping people safe, getting people down there without a lot of congestion. People who want to sell hot dogs and hamburgers on the side of the road weren't happy, but they didn't pay four, five thousand or ten thousand dollars for a vendor's license either. So I'm very happy it went off without, my understanding, without any kind of confusion. So, um, I think when we work together in these communities where that big crowds impact, we can make a difference and, uh, not have any hard feelings when it's over. I also want to say a real special thanks to my daughter-in-law, my little soldier, uh, Mercedes and my grandkids while we were in Phoenix, she was in the parade for me for the Veterans Day Parade. That's a parade I've only missed one other time because I do want to honor veterans. And I'm very thankful for President Obama for moving forward with the Jobs Act for veterans. Uh, I don't know why, somewhere along the line, we've had two wars that we didn't pay for and then when the veterans come back, nobody wants to give them a job. So thank you to the veterans. And that leads into the Rushin family, my deepest, deepest sympathy because my daughter-in-law was in Iraq for one year. My son Sean, her husband, is in Afghanistan as a citizen soldier training police officers for the federal highway system on how to, uh, conduct traffic and all of those things. So my heart breaks for them and it breaks every time I think of my own son going in harm's way. And of course, our own Karen. I'm always sad. I think Fox News want to report about my flowers. Well, you're darn right. If I'd gotten known about Karen in time, she's going to get flowers to her family. Because it's just to honor the people we love and care about in our community. So my heart, uh, is really affected by that. And for veterans, my sorority Gemma Phi Delta did have, and we're still doing the Sister Soldier Project, and that's for African-American women and other women who need hair products that are not easy to come by in these foreign countries. And, um, going to be picking up, um, hair products, perms, um, shampoos and things that anyone have that want to share. Uh, all this week, I will be picking up those products. We will be, uh, next week packaging these care packages together to get to the Sister Soldiers Project, uh, for those, uh, serving abroad. I mean, thanks for the historic, um, calendar. Those calendars are great gifts. People line up calling me for those calendars just as much as they do for tickets. I love the calendars. So I've got mine here and I'm going to make sure I take it home, but I'm going to need a few more for gifts. I just like to share them, especially with seniors who need the big blocks to put things in, like a senior like me. That's what I use them for. Thank you very much. Now for my National League of Cities report. Orlando has been treated very well by the National League of Cities because we have been integral in the leadership at that agency, at that, uh, uh, organization for many, many, many years, long before I was elected and I'm the longest-serving person here. And through the years, we have all served in leadership, uh, roles, including hosting them here in two thousand for NBC Leo, the National Black Caucus in two thousand and five and the entire organization in two thousand and eight. In, um, Phoenix, Commissioner, um, Michael Johnson and Mia Gordon were phenomenal in hosting us. But the real news was, I know a few years ago, Patty's, uh, Commissioner Sheehan served on nominating and I had it this year where you work till you fall. It was very, very difficult assignment. But a few years ago, we brought home the pharmacy discount cards. We haven't done well as well as cities that are one-eighth or one, uh, uh, fourth our size. I think it's because we have so many of those cards around the county, the, everybody has them. So that was not our primary card in getting your pharmaceuticals for fifty, twenty-five percent, uh, discount. Also, I'm working with Kevin Edmonds and met with two companies, uh, including the one through the National League of Cities that I brought back, uh, the idea two years ago regarding a water and sewer line warranty, uh, program where you pay four, four fifty or up to ten dollars maybe a month. And if something happens to that space between your house and the city curb, curb where, um, you've got to pay for it, you would have a sort of insurance. We're working very hard on that and I want to say thanks to Byron and Kevin for moving that along. And I know, Mayor, you're very engaged in that and up to date on it. So, um, I'm excited about the possibility I will make the first payment because I do not want to spend three thousand dollars, um, on any kind of disconnect. And I've done it before with my plumbing. So now to another part of that, I just want to tell you a couple of things that we learned at National League of Cities and a few weeks ago when I met at the White House. That, uh, most of us know, the federal deficit has grown from thirty-three percent of the GDP in two thousand and one to a whopping thirty-two, um, sixty-two percent in twenty-ten. And the short-term recovery really did help our deficit and we need that now. But part of the problems, as I mentioned before, for the structural imbalances and the rise in healthcare, and that's why we really need this healthcare program we have. And I can't understand for the sake of me why anyone would oppose having human beings insured and the health in any state, let alone talking about repealing it. But, uh, one of the things I want to share, uh, with you was that the reason for some of that is not just the ideology, but of course, and the structural problems with our economic system, but that of the wars. When you have wars that don't pay for themselves, it helps create this deficit. Most people want to go to our mandatory spending and call it out. For instance, Social Security. If everybody would give back their Social Security checks that, um, think they want to vote against it, well, that may solve part of the problem. But I would, and I would really ask families to talk to their parents and grandparents. Social Security is an enterprise that is paid for through our giving. This is not something coming out of your taxes. I paid my Social Security, so don't bother me when I get my Social Security in May. And I won't bother you for having had yours. And I'm going to protect you to get yours in the future. But mandatory spending for the federal deficit is fifty-five percent and that's that mandatory part. The defense spending, twenty percent. Just interest on our debt, six percent. And our non-defense spending, nineteen percent. We know that there's an opportunity to get some of that money back and the Budget Control Act is recommending a cut of one trillion. And the supercommittee we all know about that didn't do anything, did they, Mayor? I didn't hear anything happen on November twenty-third. The supercommittee was supposed to do something by November twenty-third. And if they do not, by December twenty-third, some automatic cuts are going to occur. Let me tell you the impact it's going to have on Orlando. These are spending cuts that are coming down. And Lila Allen had already told me about one I wasn't that familiar with, but, um, it really will, uh, impact our transportation and housing. CDBG will be reduced to three point five billion for the whole country. The cops hiring will go to zero. There would be no money. The burn and jag program is reduced by sixteen percent, Chief. That's three hundred and fifty-seven million for the whole country. Sustainable communities that give us grants in, uh, uh, that initiative, zero pennies. A tagger grant where we got ten million dollars for, um...
Creative Village.
Huh?
Creative Village.
Well, I'm older than they are, so they have to help me. We got a tagger grant for ten million dollars for Creative Village that expands the, the limo. And that's zero now. The Highway Formula funding, a reduction of thirty-four percent. Formula Transit funding minus thirty-seven percent, down to five point two billion. Hope Six that gave us the great Carver Park and Hampton Park, zero. No opportunity. Choice Neighborhoods, zero. Home Formula reduced to, it's minus twenty-five percent, one-fourth, one point two billion for the country and a number of other, uh, reductions. But at least assistance to firefighters, even though it's reduced seventeen percent, it leaves something there. So firefighters that we propped up with the other...
Safer.
Safer. Uh, Safer Grant, it could be impacted seventeen percent. So we have to pay attention to ideology and who's setting these things up, including the Pell Grant, um, if you have any debt. I am just so thankful that through the city, I am able to go and represent my city and advocate and lobby on your behalf because there's some bad things could happen. One of them is the National League of Cities agrees with all of this, but if the tax-exempt municipal bonding financing is changed, it will cost us more money to borrow money. You know, like the interest on your loans. And it is in limbo right now. So we need to know what's happening to you, city, and what a great job. Hate to pat ourselves on the back, but we have done a great job here in the city of Orlando by not raising taxes, managing to keep most of our programs intact and giving to you guys all of the work you do. Uh, we want to commend you, Lila and all the work that you guys do. It's just so many things are going to happen and we're going to ask Congress and your congresspeople to avoid unfunded mandates. That, um, American Jobs Act will help. So let's change our ideology and just focus on what's right for the country and what's right for our city. And I appreciate that. And now for the agenda. Marcia came to me on A one and that was fine. I just wanted to, uh, indicate that A three, which we've all talked about, is a, um, great id- um, a great program and it's because of our relationship with, um, with, uh, NLC. But one of the things that may come back later, and we're talking about the death rate of black males from homicides. So that's one thing we did at NLC also, uh, along with all these other issues. So we'll come, deal with that later. On A five, uh, code enforcement cleanup. I don't care where I am. I have problems with code enforcement issues. I call code enforcement. So I say thank you for A five and increasing that, Mayor, um, because with the reduction of some of our services, people are letting go of their vacant lots and things that are happening, even some homes. So thank you very much, Mike, for moving that on. And of course, the two Head Start programs. We have one at Callahan and one at Northwest Community Center. Those are great programs. So anything we can do with the county to ensure their continued existence is the right thing. Commissioner Sheehan mentioned the Harvest, Second Harvest that's at HD Supply. Commissioner Sheehan mentioned the harvest, second harvest, that's at HD Supply in District Five. So we're very, very thankful for all the things we've been able to do and get on this agenda program. Just really, really appreciate all of the things that staff did on this one. It was a feel-good to me agenda this, this, this week. God bless you.
Commissioner, you wanted to have a green and orange color scheme this week, is that right?
Uh, whatever. Oh, no, there you go. You know, listen to everybody. See? I am strictly, I am strictly a wildcat. So, but Mayor Dyer likes to...
I go both ways.
I know. Depends on who's winning. He's a, what do you call those things at FAMU? He's one of those. But I'm a tiger. I am a feline. I am not a reptile. And, uh, I do not wear a, boy, turn it, I've got on a look green today. I've been turned. I will get it right, and this, this Saturday, guys, I hope BCC pulls it off. I'm very disappointed.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ings. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Without objection, I'm gonna skip down to the hearings and take up the bond resolution. Um, we need to take that up and vote as a city council on that before we take up the CRA.
Okay.
Portion of it. So we will, uh, what I'm gonna do is open, open the public hearing concerning the proposed adoption of a resolution approving the issuance by the CRA of not to exceed thirty-six million in tax increment revenue refunding bonds for Republic Drive Universal Boulevard. And I'm gonna ask Chris to give a, I tell you what, Chris, let everybody that is, uh, got their money on consent, let them go, and then if you would, uh, give us an overview. Thank you for being here nights.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you like me to read the title of this?
I guess you can do that. I don't think we actually need to, but we can.
This is a resolution of the City of Orlando, Florida approving the issuance by the City of Orlando, Florida Community Redevelopment Agency of the not to exceed thirty-six million City of Orlando, Florida Community Redevelopment Agency Tax Increment Revenue Refunding Bonds, Republic Drive, Universal Boulevard District, Series 2011, to refund and redeem the outstanding City of Orlando, Florida Community Redevelopment Agency Tax Increment Revenue Refunding Bonds, Republic Drive, Universal Boulevard, I-4 Interchange Project, Series 2002, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a first supplemental indenture of trust with respect to such bonds, providing certain other authorizations, providing perseverance, and providing an effective date.
Second.
Okay, Chris. Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Ings. Chris?
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Chris McCullion, the Treasurer for the city. The item before you today is a public hearing, adoption of a resolution authorizing the CRA to issue its Series 2012 Tax Increment Bonds for the Republic Drive District. Just a quick history on Republic Drive. The district was established in nineteen ninety-four to address transportation deficiencies in the I-4 and what was then Universal Studios area and what was soon to be City Walk and Islands of Adventure. Uh, the district receives tax increment revenues from the city in Orange County, and those revenues are used to pay the debt service on the Republic Drive bonds. Under the nineteen ninety-six interlocal agreement between the city and the county, uh, any excess revenues available after repayment of the debt are rebated back out to the city and the county general funds. Just wanna note that this is a separate and distinct district from the downtown district, uh, so this refunding does not impact the downtown CRA in any way. The map on the left side of your screen shows the location of the CRA districts within the city limits. You can see in the lower-left corner, southwest section of the city, in purple is the Republic Drive District. On the right side, uh, the map is just a close-up, and you can see that it's, uh, mainly, uh, the Universal Orlando Resort area. Purpose of the refunding is to refund the thirty-three million dollars of outstanding Series 2002 Republic Drive Bonds, which were originally issued to refund the city's ninety-seven A Special Assessment Bonds. Ninety-seven A Bonds originally financed the design, acquisition, and construction of the interchange at I-4 and Republic Drive, which is now known as Universal Boulevard. Uh, so why are we, why are we refinancing the two thousand and two bonds? Municipal interest rates are at historically low levels. This will allow us to issue the two thousand and twelve bonds at interest rates that are lower than the O-two bonds, uh, which will result in lower debt service and therefore higher rebates back to the city and the county general funds. The repayment source is tax increment revenues received by the Republic Drive District. Bonds will be issued with fixed interest rates. Uh, they will not exceed, uh, not extend past the maturity of the two thousand and two bonds. We're not extending maturities here. Uh, expected savings over the life of the bonds is two point three million dollars, which will be split, uh, about fifty-six percent city, forty-four percent county in relation to their contributions into the district. And again, just this refunding will increase the amount of those rebates that go back into the city and county general funds, which are then available for any general purpose. Required actions today, uh, staff's recommending and requesting that you hold this public hearing and adopt a resolution authorizing the CRA's issuance of the bonds. After adoption of the city's resolution, you as the CRA will also adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of the bonds. And just for the record, I wanna say that pursuant to Florida statutes, Section one-sixty-three point three four six, this hearing was advertised in a sentinel on November second, and notices of taxing authorities were mailed on October twenty-eighth. If you have any questions after public comment, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Questions of Chris at this point? If not, we'll move into public testimony. I have one card, Jim Callahan. Jim Callahan.
Yes, Jim Callahan, two oh four East South Street, Unit thirty fifty-two. I was just concerned that, the, the presentation cleared up some questions I had because, um, the appendix had some blanks to be filled in, and the resolution referred to the blanks being filled in based on negotiation. So I was just curious, who would be doing the negotiation on behalf of the city or the
Chris.
Excuse me? Chris, okay.
He's asking who would do the negotiation. Chris, you wanna explain how the transaction works?
The resolution authorizes the mayor to fill in the blanks, but, uh, you have a financing team that's, uh, consists of city staff, underwriters, bond counsel, disclosure counsel, and special issuers counsel, so it will be a team effort. Um, but, uh, most of the, the blanks that are still left in there are just details that would be remaining, um, the total par amount of the bonds, um, certain interest rates, information like that that we will know as we get further down the process.
Well, that was my concern. I mean, it's like you don't go into your house closing and say, well, we'll fill in the interest rates and a few other blanks, you know, at closing. Those are fairly key things, you know, how much you're gonna be paying and so forth.
Rebecca, we're going.
Thank you. Rebecca Sutton, Chief Financial Officer. Um, the, uh, the way that we make sure that our goals with regard to this refunding are achieved is that we have a refunding savings minimum. We must achieve that refunding savings minimum. That means then that if we can't go out into the market and get the conditions necessary to get that additional savings, we don't do the issue.
And then finally, my understanding is this will be fixed rate. We won't be in the variable rate situation that the Expressway Authority got itself into.
We never are.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions for Chris now, Commissioner Ings and Commissioner Diamond.
You know, I can let Commissioner Diamond go or...
Either one. Commissioner Diamond then Commissioner Ings.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you expect to shorten the amount of time that the city is paying on these bonds?
Uh, the plan right now is to keep the same maturity as existing bonds. The interlocal agreement between the city and the county, um, really is, is set up to contemplate a thirty-year issuance from the beginning, um, and to not pay these off early, although that could theoretically be renegotiated through an amendment to the interlocal. But as it stands today, if you were issuing these under the existing agreement with the county, we wouldn't extend or shorten the maturity.
Okay. And you had a, a total savings amount per year, um, about how much would that mean in savings for the city?
It's about a hundred and seventy thousand, uh, total. Uh, the city would, uh, receive about ninety-five thousand dollars of that savings. The county would receive the seventy-five thousand.
And that, and that's per year until twenty twenty-five?
Per year. That's right.
Okay, thanks.
Now, Commissioner Ings?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just on the lighter side, uh, this two point three million savings, um, since I-4 and Universal is in District Six, rather than the general fund, can that come into District Six?
That is on the lighter side, Commissioner.
It is, it's on the wrong side, too.
Okay. Further discussion, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Now we'll move back up to the CRA, and we will, without objection, recess the city council meeting, will convene the CRA meeting. The first item is to accept meeting minutes from the CRA Advisory Board from September twenty-eighth. Is there a motion to accept those minutes? Motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor of the, he said at the same time. On the motion, you can have the next one. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, second item of business is approving the meeting minutes from our CRA meeting of October seventeenth, two thousand and eleven. Commissioner Sheehan, do you have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Sheehan?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ortiz. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Third item of business, why don't you read that, Alana?
Adopting a resolution supplementing that certain resolution of the City of Orlando, Florida Community Redevelopment Agency adopted on February twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-six, and authorizing the issuance of tax increment revenue refunding bonds for Public Drive slash Universal Boulevard District, Series two thousand and twelve.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Ings. This is the same resolution we just approved as city council, we're approving as the CRA. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thomas, any further business to come before the CRA? Then we are adjourned and we'll reconvene the... No, why don't we convene the Neighborhood Improvement District meeting?
Wow.
Um, which will be the first time we have actually done that. And what we have before us today is the adoption of the proposed bylaws. So if I could get a motion in a second, then I'll have Kevin explain them.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Diamond. Kevin, could you take us through the bylaws?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is, uh, the bylaws are another step in the implementation of the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District. The bylaws reflect the ordinances and approvals that you have already approved over the past year. Number one is the, the bylaws provide that the city shall have the powers that are allowed for neighborhood improvement districts under Chapter one sixty-three Florida statutes. Uh, the Board of Directors may levy ad valorem taxes up to two mils and special assessments subject to referendum. In our case, uh, no referendum would be held before January twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen, because in the, uh, recommendations in creating the Neighborhood Improvement District, uh, there was a condition that eighteen months, uh, go by before there would be any referendum. And, um, then it comes to the duties themselves. If you recall, about a year ago, there was a Neighborhood Improvement District Exploratory Committee Report that recommended that you adopt the, the district and then divide up the duties into major duties and minor duties. Uh, so the Board of Directors would retain, uh, the major decisions, and those include, uh, rec, uh, any decisions regarding taxation, uh, financing, eminent domain, approving the annual budget for the NID, uh, approving a capital improvements program, and then approving any expenditure over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The recommendations of the Exploratory Committee Report also, uh, recommended that the city council appoint an advisory council, which council did appoint in October. And then the duties of the advisory council would be, uh, uh, things assigned to the council by the Board of Directors. And those would be things like, uh, actually preparing a, a, operating budget for approval by the board, uh, preparing an annual report on district activities, preparing a neighborhood improvement plan, uh, the capital improvement plan that the board would approve, applying for grants, uh, reviewing the vision plan and recommending changes, reviewing any zoning overlays in the district and recommending changes, and basically monitoring development in the district and promoting and advertising the advantages of being in the district. So bottom line is, uh, the board, the, uh, bylaws, uh, implement the ordinances that were already adopted, dividing the duties up into, uh, major decisions and minor decisions. The advisory council that was, uh, appointed recently will have their first meeting, uh, this week on Thursday, uh, and then they will then adopt their own bylaws and get going on a budget and, and their goals for the year, so.
Questions of Kevin. Commissioner Don.
Thank you. First of all, does this, um, item that's up today, does this have to be voted on again, or is this it for this?
No, this is a, it's a resolution. It's one time.
One time, okay. And then as far as the, um, the item the directors are gonna be doing, what is the timetable for that? You said they're meeting this week. When do you expect them to have that done?
They'll meet for their very first time this week, which will be reviewing, uh, the, the history of the, the district, and, uh, we'll have a draft bylaws for them to, to start thinking about. They'll have to meet again in December, so we'd like them to adopt their bylaws and a, a budget by the end of the year, or by the first of the year, yes.
Okay. And does that come back to the city council, or is their action the final action on that?
The budget will come back to city council or to the, the Board of Directors, yes.
Okay. And then, um, I think that's all the questions I have. Thanks.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna congratulate you guys and congratulate the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District. We are closely watching, cause we are coming through, we wanna do the same thing on South San Rock. So I just wanna, uh, commend y'alls' effort, and this is amazing. This is great. This is something that is gonna give us a great opportunity to revitalize our areas. So we're really looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Mayor?
Commissioner Lyman?
I, I just want to ask, I was, I was listening to Commissioner Diamond ask questions, and I know when we talked about this before, I was thinking the two commissioners were intimately engaged in the misogyn of this thing, and I was just surprised that he was asking something I would think that he probably should've known all along. Were you not involved in, happened with this? It's your district, isn't it?
Um, part of it is my district, um, part of it is not, and, um...
One and four, isn't it?
You know, I don't know. I, you know, I think these were, um, I don't know that anybody's ever said exactly what the timetable would be.
Okay.
And, uh, um, I think there've been a lot of details, and I think these are, you know, I don't, you know, I don't think there are anything that, um, are a big surprise based on what I've heard today. It's pretty much what I expected. I was kinda curious, cause it's something I get a lot of people that are interested in what's going on in the area, and, um, there's a lot of interest in the area to try to improve the area, so.
Well, I remember when it came up before, I thought a part of what we had said on council is that you guys were gonna, uh, meet and kind of massage this, so when it came back, there wouldn't... I mean, not that there's anything wrong with asking questions, I was just thinking you were so engaged that, you and Commissioner Sheehan, that, that it would've been...
Yeah. No, that's a fair question, but no, I've not, I've not been, um, in, in, been involved since the last time this came to the council.
I have.
Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We will adjourn the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Directors meeting, reconvene the city council meeting, and move to hearings, ordinances on second reading. Number one, Madam Clerk, would you read that, please?
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida mending the city's growth management plan by changing the future land use map designation on property generally located north of Columbia Street, south of Gore Street, east of Lucerne Terrace, and north of South Orange Avenue, comprised of about point five-three acres from urban activity center to office medium intensity. Directing amendment of the city's official future land use map series, providing perseverance ability, corrections, covenants, errors, and an effective date.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone for the public to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida changing the zoning designation from AC-three SP to O-one SP on certain real property generally located north of the Tangelo Park neighborhood, south of the Festival Bay Mall, east of the International Drive Corridor, and west of Groundpoint Industrial Park and the Florida Turnpike, comprised of six point seven-eight acres, more or less, mending the city's official zoning map as initiated by the property owner, providing perseverance ability, corrections, covenants, errors, and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone for the public to like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Ordinances, first reading, number one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida mending the city's adopted growth management plan by mending figure CI fourteen entitled City of Orlando, two thousand and ten through two thousand and fifty- plan by mending figure CI14 entitled City of Orlando 2010 through 2015 Capital Improvement Element Capital Improvements Fund Schedule, amending policies in the capital improvements element, the transportation element, and the public school facilities element, providing perseverance and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clark?
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida changing the zoning designation from PD/T/HP to O1/T/HP for certain real property generally located north of East Amelia Street, south of Mount Vernon Street, along the west side of North Fern Creek Avenue, and addressed as 1525 East Amelia Street, and comprised of .55 acres, more or less, mending the city's official zoning map as initiated by the property owner, providing perseverance, correction, scriveners, errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clark?
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida mending the city's adopted growth management plan by mending the city's future land use map designation from industrial to mixed-use corridor medium intensity for certain real property generally located north and west of Brookhaven Drive, south of Virginia Drive, and east of Ferris Avenue, and addressed as 723 Brookhaven Drive comprised of .31 acres, more or less, changing the zoning designation from IG/T to MU/1, MU1/T for the same real property, directing amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps, providing perseverance, correction, scriveners, errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clark?
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida changing the zoning classification from R2A to R3A on certain real property generally located north of Minosa Street, south of Columbia Street, east of Florence Avenue, west of Bruton Boulevard, and addressed as 4032 Columbia Street, comprised of .11 acres, more or less, amending the city's official zoning map as initiated by the property owner, providing perseverance, correction, scriveners, errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is anyone from the public would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Commissioner Lyman?
I'm sorry. I'm going to do what some of our residents do, just make the wrong talk at the wrong time. But I forgot to thank Charles Remdat for his traffic, for the Orlando column piece I was talking about everybody else. So I just had to get that out for Public Works and Charles and that crew. Sorry about that.
Commissioner Ings was getting nervous on that.
What was that about?
What's going on?
It's just what he does to mine.
Further discussion on point. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council. We do have general appearances, but we're going to take a short, two-minute break before we do that.